Stans, please pledge allegiance of your employees.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, the caller to roll call, say on the right.
Counselperson Josh Hearn.
Counselperson Brent Meyer.
Mayor Jimmy John King, Counselperson Craig Hearsay.
Counselperson Jeremiah O'Leary.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Does anybody over there have anything they had?
No, we gave you a handout, but that's part of the show.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We're looking for approval of the council meeting minutes of May tenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
April twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I was not saying if we're approving tonight's minutes, we haven't even really started yet.
See if he was paying attention. We have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes us on to financing the budget. We have the accounts payable listing, the additional listing there. Any questions, we'll ask the panel here at the car lot.
I'm going to approve on that.
We have a motion to approve. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion at all? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us into motions and general business. And the first item of the night on the motions and general business is the twenty twenty-one audit and presentation by Smith Schaefer and Associates. Andrew, take it away. This second, I better read through this. For the. Andrew, Mr. Schaefer, in the council meeting to present the twenty twenty-one year-end city's financial statements and the audit results. Now, Andrew, you're on.
Alright, um, so tonight, uh, we'll walk through the PowerPoint. Uh, sorry about that, not getting that projected for you guys tonight. Um, but we'll walk through the PowerPoint. Um, the PowerPoint is, uh, all the numbers come directly out of the financial statement, the actual audit that is presented up on the screen. Uh, we will not walk through that tonight. Um, we will, uh, walk through this PowerPoint. As I mentioned, everything that comes out there will be directly. If there's any questions where the numbers are, uh, we can trace it back to the power, uh, to the actual audited financial statement. So if you slip ahead to this first. Their audit. So our audit, uh, we did present a clean, unmodified opinion, uh, which means we believe everything is fairly stated in accordance with GAAP. Um, it is reasonable, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free from material statement, as we do not look at every single transaction that occurred throughout the year. Uh, with that said, we do take a risk-based approach and, uh, trace many supporting, uh, many selections back to the supporting documentation, and anything that was selected for testing was provided to us. Uh, we are also independent from the city. Uh, we have no, uh, independence issues from the city. Um, also in the financial statement is our legal compliance. Um, there are seven tests related to legal compliance that cities have to stock, have to follow. Um, there is conflict of interest, uh, public indebtedness, claims of dispersment, TIF, contract and bid laws, and depository to public funds. Uh, we noted no exceptions with any of those tests, uh, as we are reporting the tests throughout the audit. Uh, we did review the financial statements in more detail with the finance committee on April twenty-sixth. Um, it, uh, more and the more line-by-line detail, they got the long version. You guys get the cliff version tonight. Um, we issued two, uh, letters also with our audit. Uh, the first one is the letter regarding internal control matters. Uh, we have the same finding that we had in the past, just the segregation of duties with the limited number of people in the accounting, uh, department. You guys cannot properly segregate all the accounting, uh, duties. Um, you guys do have controls in place, um, but the, uh, not in process in place, which are good, but there is, uh, not enough to, uh, get that finding away, as you guys continue to work on those internal control processes. And then the auditor's responsibility letter. Um, there was new, one new standard this year that we did adopt. Um, it's noted in the, uh, one letter. Um, it used to be called a comprehensive annual financial report. Um, it is now called an annual comprehensive financial report, so they changed it out, two words around. Um, so that was a new, uh, standard that was adopted, and we did that, uh, in the financial statement. And then we did, uh, do the GFOA, uh, certificate response to the findings, since you guys do, uh, submit to the GFOA, uh, for the annual conference, hence the financial report for the award. Um, they do respond with, uh, some findings for us to correct in the next year, in the prior year. Uh, there is three minor findings related to some wording, and we adjusted all those wordings. Uh, so we should, are planning to submit once again for the award. Um, there is no single audit, uh, this year. The federal grants were not more than, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then the city did receive the GFOA certificate of excellence in financial reporting in each of the last fourteen years, and once again, we will apply for that award in twenty twenty-one. On slide three then, is the different various funds that the city does have. The general fund is the main operations of the city. There's six special revenue funds, uh, debt service funds. So these are, uh, multiple funds that are recorded in single categories, and then the capital project funds, the city capital projects fund, and about thirty of those funds are combined into one, uh, line in the financial statement. On slide four then, is just the tax capacity. Uh, so this is not your property tax levy. This is just the tax capacity for the city. Um, over the last ten years there, it's grown over two million dollars, uh, with a continual growth in the city, and then also the increase in property values. Um, so the city is, uh, gaining that tax capacity and having more, uh, availability for taxing, for tax, taxable capacity. On slide five then, is the actual property taxes collected. So about three million, seven hundred and eight thousand is the total property taxes that was collected. Um, that's about fifty-two percent of the total governmental revenues that is collected. Um, governmental revenues is anything coming into the city other than the utility funds, so more than half of your revenue do come in through property taxes. Um, that was up about a hundred and sixty-three thousand from the prior year, a little over four and a half percent. On slide six then, is your tax increment revenue. Um, so this is the first year that there is, uh, two, uh, TIP active districts, uh, with Alcon and Geotech. Uh, Geotech was the first year of collection, so brought in about fifty-three thousand dollars this year, uh, through tax increment. Um, market value on slide seven, the gold there, so this represents about sixteen percent of the total governmental revenue. Um, so total LGA was a little over a million. Uh, fifty-six thousand brought in from the year, up about thirty-three thousand from the prior year. Um, LGA is expected to increase about twenty-six thousand in, uh, twenty twenty-two. On slide eight then, just breaks apart the main, uh, areas of, uh, revenues that the city, uh, does get in for the governmental funds. Uh, some, as I mentioned, some, small amounts in the beginning there with the taxing committee doesn't. Charges for service in the middle there, uh, brings in about three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that's up about eighty thousand from the prior year. Uh, most of that is due to the city being able to operate at, uh, more full capacity, um, with less COVID restrictions in the current year than in twenty twenty. And then also some more rents in the community centers, uh, civic center, uh, being able to rent that out. Uh, your largest area of funding, as I mentioned, is your property taxes, uh, about three point seven million, and then the local government aid, um, on the far right, a little over a million dollars. So you can see that that gap is widening, uh, between the property taxes and LGA, um, as everything is costing more. Uh, the state is not continuing to take in their fair share, so you've had to increase property taxes to help with the increase in costs. On slide ten then, we break over to the governmental, federal governmental expenditures. Um, so this is gonna be your, uh, mayor and council administration, uh, professional services, supplies, telephone insurance dues, travel and parking costs. So spent just over seven hundred and ninety thousand in the current year. Uh, the green is gonna be over, we're considering operating expenditures, as the red is broken out for capital outlay. Um, so there was about an eighty thousand dollar increase in operating expenditures this year, about twenty-six thousand related to employee wages, about seven thousand to professional service, about twenty-sixth, uh, engineering, and then about eighteen thousand on the comprehensive plan that came into the general government category. If there's any questions that do come up on here, please feel free to stop me. On slide eleven then, is the public safety and transportation. Um, transportation, um, is prior to twenty fourteen, so there's no longer that transportation, but the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen do have transportation numbers in there, so that's why that is excluded. Um, so this is the law enforcement, fire protection, street lighting, and transit. Just, uh, spent over a million, almost thirty thousand in twenty twenty-one, up about seventy-two thousand, um, from the prior year. This is the largest area of expenses for, expenditures for the city, and a little over twenty-six percent of the total governmental expenditures, but exclude capital outlay and debt service. Um, most of that increase was in, uh, up about ten thousand in police contract, about fifteen thousand in street lighting, and then the way that we are accounting for the fines that were passed through to almost the county. Um, we are also, we used to nettle, now we are presenting them girls, and that was also about a fifteen thousand dollar increase, and we lost, uh, a training room, so, uh, for capital outlay. Slide twelve then breaks it apart just by the various categories there. The main categories, law enforcement, about five hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, fire protection and first responders, up about twenty-six thousand. Most of that is due to repair and maintenance, and then there's also some, uh, capital, uh, for some hoses, racks, and fence, and then, uh, Lucas machine as well. And then street lighting is up fifteen percent. So the law enforcement contract, uh, totaled about five hundred and sixty-one thousand. Um, so the fire protection was funded by property taxes, about a hundred and six thousand township contract cost, about eighty-nine thousand, and then state fire rate, which is passed through the fire relief, about six hundred, sixty-seven thousand. Public works on slide thirteen, um, so a total of about five hundred and six thousand, up about twenty-one thousand from the prior year. It's about thirteen percent of the total governmental. Thirteen percent of the total governmental expenditures. The increase primarily, is primarily due to additional street maintenance and operating supplies, so pretty consistent overall, uh, with increasing costs, and kept that category pretty good. On slide fourteen then, is the library expenditures. Um, so total expenditures about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand in twenty twenty-one, up about sixty-four thousand the prior year. Uh, just under ten percent of the total governmental expenditures. Um, the expenses are primarily funded through property taxes, about two hundred and ninety-one thousand, about fifty-six thousand from the county. Um, so most of that increase in expenditure is due to the retirements, about fifty thousand is related to benefits, and, uh, salaries related to, uh, in the library expenditures. That is the majority of that increase. Recreation on slide fifteen is the civic center, uh, swimming pool, summer programs, adult softball, grounds, and parks. Um, so the yellow is gonna be your capital outlay above, um, so most of that increase was related to the pool heater and the pool, pool play feature, which was, uh, funded through donations. Uh, total expenditures just under seven hundred thousand, up about a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the prior year. Uh, the green and operating expenditure were up just under a hundred thousand, mostly due to pool salaries, as we saw the increase in revenues, um, and then also some, uh, park supplies as well. So on the next slide, it breaks apart, uh, the park, uh, revenues in the blue. Uh, the red is gonna be the operating expenditure. The park brings in about twenty-seven thousand through various donation and contributions. Um, in the current year, they spend about three hundred and thirty-five thousand, up about forty thousand. Most of that is due to supplies and then a little increase in utilities. The pool brings in about two hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, spends about two hundred and fifty-six thousand on operations, and about, uh, thirty thousand on capital this year. And then the adult softball brings in, um, about a little over seven thousand, spends just over five thousand. Slide seventeen then is your economic, economic development expenditures. Um, so this is the revolving loans, the TIP expenditures, and professional services. Uh, so spent just under five hundred and twelve thousand this year, uh, about eighty-seven thousand in, uh, professional services from CETA, just over twenty thousand tax payments. A big change this year was that hundred and seventy-five thousand, that Smith grant that was passed through, um, to Geotech, but it was, uh, to the city, so it was a revenue and expenditure coming in, so it had no impact on the city, but it was an expenditure as we reported it. And then about forty-seven thousand in TIF payments, and then there was three new revolving loans that were issued for about a hundred and fifteen thousand. The blue in the prior year is related to the care, was, uh, funded from the, uh, funding. Slide eighteen then, just looks at your total category that we just discussed, uh, so you can compare, so you can see, public safety is the highest, uh, amount. Our hot, largest expenditure in area for the city, which is very common in cities, um, and it's very expensive to provide those, uh, services to the citizens. Um, and then the general government was the second, and then recreation, third, um, and then, uh, economic development, public works are about the same, and followed by the library. On slide nineteen then, is the general fund, uh, budget to actual, so budget in the blue, actual in the red. Um, so total general fund expenditures were under budget by about a hundred and twenty-two thousand in the current year. Uh, the various categories, the general government was about fifteen thousand over, primarily due to engineering. Public safety was, uh, over budget about thirty-five thousand, uh, fifteen thousand of that, as I mentioned, was related to the fines, the way that we are accounting for those, and then the increase in street lighting as well. Public work was under budget, about a hundred and sixty-three thousand, and then the culture and arts creation was under budget, ten thousand. Uh, the general fund revenues were also under budget, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, so the city did about, uh, thirty-two thousand worse than budget, but they still added about a hundred and seventeen thousand reserves. Um, the other five funds that we present, uh, budget to actual expenditures on, there's the revolving loan, the library, volunteer fire, first responder, civic center, and economic development. Revolving loan expenditures were over budget by about eighty-five thousand. Uh, that was just a guess, depending on how many businesses are gonna, uh, request loans, and as I mentioned, there is three loans that were issued in the current year. Or in twenty twenty-one. Library was also over budget, about thirty-three thousand, mostly due to the retirements and the increase in salary and benefits. Uh, volunteer fire, uh, over budget. Um, most of that was related to, uh, capital category, as they had to, uh, put it place, and then some higher repair costs. Civic center was right on budget, and then the economic development was under budget, about twelve thousand. Um, the general fund reserves, um, so one metric that people use to test the health of the city's fund balance is if you take the unassigned, uh, committed fund balance and divide it by your total expenditures. So your unassigned and committed fund balances are in the gold color. Your unassigned, or, excuse me, your total expenditures in the blue. Uh, so total expenditures were just, uh, under two point seven million, up about two hundred thousand. Your unassigned, uh, fund balance was up about a hundred and seventeen thousand between the unassigned and committed. Um, so you're at about seventy-two percent, so pretty consistent the last three years that we've been within seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four, so, um, pretty steady operations. Um, and with those increasing costs, you've still been able to put money away for future needs. Library fund, on slide twenty-three, uh, so has a total fund balance there of about two hundred and forty thousand. Um, it's funded through property taxes of two hundred and ninety-one thousand. The top category is gonna be the trust, um, about eighty-three thousand, and then the remainder of that is the assigned fund balance. Civic center, uh, fund increased by about five thousand, has about sixty-one thousand now. Uh, revenues for property taxes totaled the same as the prior year, sixty-three thousand, and then the increase in charges for service this year, about ten thousand, so is up about eight thousand. Um, so we did add, uh, some fund balance in the civic center fund. Fire and first responders fund, um, funded decreased by about forty-four thousand in the current year, mostly due to capital purchases and repair costs. Um, the drop in twenty seventeen is when they transferred two hundred and thirty-nine thousand to establish a fire capital equipment fund. Um, there is no debt outstanding that is being serviced by this fund. Um, the revolving loan fund on page twenty-six, um, has about, uh, a hundred and eighty-six thousand outstanding, in outstanding loan receivable. Uh, there's three new loans issued for totaling a hundred and fifteen thousand in the current year. Um, total cash available for these future loans were about two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Economic development, um, has a fund balance of about two hundred and seven thousand on slide twenty-seven, uh, property tax collections of a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Um, pretty steady operations in the current year. Capital project fund balance. Um, so the city capital project fund has a little over one point three million in it as of year end. As I mentioned, this is about thirty funds that are combined into one single, uh, line on the financial statement. From the financial statement, the major improvements this year were the park improvements, the twenty twenty, uh, twenty-one CIP project, and then half of the fire truck that was purchased in twenty twenty-one. Um, there is no new bonds issued, uh, for this, uh, for the projects that have occurred through the, the year, but there was, uh, some interfund borrowings for the water and sewer to help finance those projects. Special assessment bonds on slide thirty, so there's three, uh, special assessment bonds outstanding. So they did, uh, decrease the total bonds outstanding in the current year. Uh, the little bonds are paid off. The twenty sixteen's paid off in twenty twenty-six, twenty seventeen's paid off in twenty twenty-seven, twenty nineteen's paid off in twenty. All those bonds are being paid timely. Um, there have been new special assessment bonds issued in the last two years. General obligation bonds, um, there was three bonds outstanding at year end, as the twenty thirteen A, uh, fire station bond was refunded. Um, and it did have an economic savings to the city of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand by refunding that, uh, bond. So all those bonds are also being paid timely. Slide thirty-two, uh, the water and sewer portions of the twenty sixteen A is also split between water and sewer. Uh, the twenty sixteen A is paid off in twenty twenty-five, and twenty nineteen's paid off in twenty thirty. All those are being supported by water and sewer revenues and being paid timely. And then on slide thirty-three is the housing development refunding, paid off in twenty twenty-six, has about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, and those are being supported by the use of payments by the sewer owners and. Um, on slide thirty-four then, is the next five-year debt service requirements, so just over a million dollars in the next, uh, four years in principal and interest. And then once some of those bonds start dropping off in twenty twenty-six, that decreases to just over eight hundred thousand. Net pension liability on slide thirty-five, um, so once again, this is, uh, since the city does participate in payroll, which is a multi-author pension plan that is underfunded. Uh, anybody that contributes into the plan has to record their share of that underfunding based on their contributions paid in the program. Um, this number is accurately determined, and we adjust to those numbers that the actuary gives to us. Um, so the total this year, um, about six hundred and eighty-three thousand outstanding. Same thing is opposite with the fire relief, uh, net pension asset, so since the fire relief has, uh, pension plan is overfunded, the city has on their books recorded a net pension asset, about, uh, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, um, in the current year. Uh, that may decrease as they did increase their pension payments for years of service, so that's why we saw that drop in, um, in that pension asset. Slide thirty-eight then, is getting into the utility funds of the water fund. We have, uh, revenues in the green, expenditures in the red, and non-operating activity in the purple, and then the net income before transfers in the orange. Uh, so there is no rate change in the current year. Revenues were up about twenty-five thousand, or a little over, uh, two and a half percent. Um, just the increase in usage made the increase in revenue. Um, the expenditures were down about, uh, twenty-two thousand, uh, mostly due to some well repairs that were done in the prior year. So the water fund operated at a positive about four hundred thousand in, uh, increase in net income, net position in the water fund. So if we look at the cash on slide thirty-nine, that's cash and bonds outstanding. Uh, so total cash at about three point seven million, about sixty-six thousand from the prior year. Uh, bonds outstanding, about four hundred and ninety thousand, paid about two thousand dollars in principal, and this is also after the transfer, um, to help finance the twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one street project that did go to bonding, as you did an internal, uh, borrowing to help pay for that project. Sewer fund, um, once again, there is no rate increase. Uh, revenues in the green, orange is gonna be our operating expenses, non-operating in the blue, and then net income in the lighter blue. Uh, sewer increases of about forty-two thousand. Once again, there wasn't a rate increase, um, but about thirty-four thousand of that is related to the shooting assessments, uh, was part of that increase in revenue. And sewer expenses were up about twenty-two thousand, just based on the timing of one chemicals were purchased, so the fund did operate, uh, up to save, uh, net income, as it was in the prior year. Sewer fund on slide forty-one, the cash in the blue, uh, bonds payable in the red, so total cash at just under one point five million, up about fifty thousand from the prior year. Uh, bonds outstanding of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. All those are being made timely, and then they did transfer into the general fund and also to help pay for that CIP. The stormwater fund on page forty-two, about eight hundred and sixteen thousand in cash, uh, no change in rate. They're continuing to develop, uh, cash reserves through excess fees. Um, and slide forty-three then, is just a pre summary. The general fund unassigned, fund, unassigned and committed fund balance of a million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, represents about seventy-two percent of the current year expenditures. In the general fund, general tax levy about fifty-two percent of the total governmental revenues coming in, while LGA was about sixteen percent. Fire department didn't go into a deficit with some of those capital outlay, uh, purchases this year, and, um, equipment, or repairs, excuse me. Um, and then they also have a separate, uh, capital project fund that has about a hundred and fifty thousand for the fire, uh, equipment capital. Revolving loan fund has loans outstanding of about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and about two hundred and sixty-two thousand in available cash for future loans. City capital project fund, reserve of one point three million, um, that, but that does include that fire capital. In total, debt outstanding decreased about five point nine million, and then the water, sewer, and stormwater funds are generating sufficient cash for to fund capital needs, service debt, and build reserves for future infrastructure needs. And then the city maintained all accurate accounting records, uh, for all city funds, had support for any other testing, for all transactions that occurred throughout the year. I went through a lot of numbers pretty quickly. Uh, quickly enough for some people, but, uh, I hope I didn't put you to sleep. Uh, any questions or comments that I can help with?
Uh, thank you for another, uh, modified, great audit there. You guys always do great work for us here. We appreciate that, and we'd also like to thank our entire staff and this council for handling the citizens' money so carefully and being responsible. Looks like we had another good year. You know, came through some kind of tough times in the door. We're doing okay. Glad to see that, and thank you all.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Senator.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay. Alright, another good audit. Uh, that takes the next item, which is approval of lifeguards, concession people for the summer. The city has advertised for lifeguards, concession workers for the twenty-two season. As per past practice, our pool director hires guards, instructors, concession workers for previous years, pending creative job openings. Additional applicants have been interviewed by Director Jacob Flynn. We have the list of applicants on here, and our action tonight is to approve this submitted, and to also give Director Flynn approval to hire additional guards or workers as needed through the season. Do we have any questions or discussion? If not, I look for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us on to our next one, is ordinances, since library bylaws. At the April twenty-six meeting, the council reviewed the attached bylaws and had the first reading of the ordinance. This will be the second reading and adoption and approved.
Already correct there.
Alright. To adopt ordinance, the council actually requested it be to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two, and ordinance approving section two eighty, library order. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second then.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us out of general business. It takes us to mayor's staff and salt reports. Is this one coming up during your report at the time? Mayor's report tonight. We would like to send the city's, send some sympathies to the families of Mary Jo Fawcett, Wendy Carol Chiar. Neighbors helping neighbors who will help with the spring cleanup for older adults and persons with disabilities. Contact the Sturgis Star for more information on that program. Citywide cleanup. Now that we had a successful citywide rummage sale, the cleanup will be Saturday, May fourteenth, from noon, or excuse me, from eight AM till noon. And then on Wednesday, May eighteenth, it will be from three PM to seven PM. We always have a great turnout for that, too. We're still taking it out to the same place, right? Two community coffee breaks are set for after hours and weekends. You stop in at the public library on Saturday, May twenty-first, to hear about future improvements to the library, and on Tuesday, June seventh, you can stop down to the fire hall at five-thirty for a general question-asked session about the city. We've had response from some of our citizens that they can make it. This morning, we had another good session over cabin coffee at nine AM, but they would like some after hours, and we're gonna try it. And so, some of you guys, if you can make it on the weekend or after hours, it'd be appreciated, too. The Stewie Cruiser car shows have started up. You stop at Two Brothers on Friday evenings and see the great cars that show up, and there's many of them. You stop at Two Brothers on Friday evenings and see the great cars that show up, and there's many of them every, every Friday. This Friday, they're gonna have the graduation cruise, and it's gonna be coming to your neighborhood around town. The color run is also this Saturday, and check into the Sturgis Star once again for details on that. That's all I have for this evening, so that'll take us on to the city administrative report.
Uh, no submitted report at conference this past week, and so the good departments we have carried the load. Um, just bring your attention to, to the, uh, primary, the congressional primary. Our council meeting will be on Monday night, the twenty-third.
You're not gonna bring a proof to the council that you were at a meeting for a week?
Got my books. Got my books, they're on the other side of the door.
All right, while the bill's got nothing, that'll take us on to finance director Carla, you got a report?
Um, I think Andrew, you go as much as you need for tonight, unless you don't want to.
That was a good report, and we thank you for all that you had to do with that too. Oh, I forgot, tomorrow night, what's tomorrow night?
Wednesday?
Senior honor banquet, right? Don't you have a senior?
Yes, I do.
I forgot to mention that, we will be the, we will, you and I, isn't it? That'll take us to public works director report, Sean.
There are two things that, uh, have come up that I wanted to discuss. One of them is the Georgetown Regional Retention Pond Fountain, uh, that we've been looking at pricing there. I've got all the pricing put together, what it would cost to get there. We obviously could get more solicit, more bidding, but to get a general idea of what it would cost, I put this in there. So, uh, people's corporate power to get power run there is in around five thousand, uh, installing outlets, and everything needed for that is gonna be thirty-five hundred. Uh, and then two one horsepower fountains run to the pond there would be, and the fountains we were looking at were the bare bones fountains that just generally for aeration, for creating as much flow as possible for turning it over. Uh, so they're not decorative, they're not the ones that are gonna shoot thirty feet in the air and have lights and everything else on them. Uh, and then Carla and I estimated, we looked at what running Florence Fountain was, it's about five hundred dollars a month, what it'd been there last year when it ran. That's running one one horsepower fountain over there, we'd be running two a year, so we kind of doubled it to come up with a little one it would cost. Uh, so you're looking at seventeen thousand for equipment, plus a thousand dollars per month while it's running. And I want to note there that the Florence ones shut down at night because they're strictly for decorative. So we shut them down at night, so it's not running from ten at night till six in the morning. So that might, if you ran them all night, if you're using them for the aeration, you might need to run them all night, it could be more than a thousand. So up to you guys where you want us to go from here.
You talked to experts on, uh, can they just come in and do something about the algae chemicals or?
And, and, and I did, I have talked to somebody about coming down and treating them chemically, they need to come down and do analysis on our pond. Uh, this was one of the areas we wanted to look at first. Uh, Shane and I were at a, uh, pond maintenance class last week in Wisconsin, and, uh, I did check with other communities there. And when it comes to the fountains, they, like Woodbury was there, they said absolutely, if you don't, because they have injured their fountains, and the second they put them in one, everybody wants them. So.
Brand brought that up the last week, and I have to somewhat agree with that.
And, uh, of the three that we communicated with and asked the questions, none of them do any fountains. So, uh, there's definitely a problem with Georgetown Pond as far as the water quality.
What do they do with the ponds, did you ask them? I mean, do they have any water quality problems like this, did you ask, talk?
Oh, yeah, there's something to do, and they showed how they've cleaned them up and some of the stuff that they've done, I'm just going through cleaning the ponds. Uh, the design in that pond is only designed at three foot, and a five-foot pond is generally what is required. So a lot of it, I think, probably has to do somewhat with the design, a lot of it can be based on water runoff. A lot of your LJ is caused from your, uh, spots and stuff like that, and your, your chemicals in your lawns. So if there's a lot of that in the air and it washes into that pond, that can create some of the issue. Uh, so there's a lot of factors that play into that. So we are going to start this year, this winter, uh, Shane is going to, we're creating a pond maintenance schedule that we're going to start drilling holes in the winter time and checking the depths on everything and stuff like that, and do a more official way of regulating and keeping track of it.
Well, I think before we get too involved in this program, I'd like to see your thoughts, you know, about chemicals or if there's some.
We can always, I've talked to the guys who run this, they can get a guy to come down here and train us on that, and then we can learn off that, so we don't have to have them come every year and then teach us what we need to do with it. And I think that's a cheaper route, in my opinion, to go that first, because we can always add fountains later if you wanted to. We can start that first and see economically how, and how well it works.
That's my thoughts, you guys got any thoughts?
I concur.
It's still like the fountains, but I had, I know the price is, is up there, but eventually the plan is to put lighting along that path, right?
We've talked about experimenting in solar lights, like we did at, um.
That's up to you guys.
I thought I saw that somewhere, I think it was at one of the open houses over at the civic center where. So if we're gonna put power down there at some point, I guess it'll be time to do it, too.
And, and solar has come a long way as far as LED lights, that they last so much longer, you know, that people are doing solar areas and stuff like that, so. Totally up to you guys if we know that throughout the time. I, I was informed we're asked to get pricing on this stuff, so that's what we did, and if we need to look at other stuff, I will.
Because it is, it's tough to walk down there in the summer when it gets, it's, it's bad.
No, I, I agree with you, the quality of that pond, and I just, I worry that a little bit with the design of that only being three feet. Uh, they were kind of surprised because they said aerators are really useless in a three-foot pond. So they didn't think that was a way to go, which would have been a little bit cheaper if it could have, but they said that, that they don't think that'll cure the issue there. So.
Let's check into a couple of other options first, Sean.
Okay, then the, the one other topic that we, I wanted to bring up and discuss was the sod on Fourth Avenue from the two thousand nineteen street project. It made it a full year that looked fine, of course, last year we had a drought. So the second year, the drought, and we lost a lot of it up there. I'm sure you guys have seen it in the Nerd from May.
I actually thought people were starting to plant like wild plants or whatever, because it looked like it was planted, so dead yellow and then just plodding.
Yeah. So we're, we've been discussing today, do we want to look at doing something there? Uh, we've kind of come up with some different options and things to do. I'm gonna come in and test, I'll bring my pH tester in tomorrow and test the pH in the soil and see where that sits, if that's part of the issue. Some areas, it's starting to come back, that's what the pictures are set up in front there. You can see, and I just did one group of them, you can hand them around and look at different ones or whatever and see the issues we have.
It's really bad, I mean, that's, I think we have to at least look at options and try to do something.
We have, we have a slit seeder, we can get the soil balanced, though, whether, whatever we gotta do, take, take a sample, let me get it tested. And balance the soil out, and then we can slit seed it, or just seed it up there, or that would be the easiest if we.
We definitely just gotta look at, at least look at doing something, because there's, ladies are gonna be upset with that, I think.
Yeah, you need to try, the slit seeder, at least.
I'll start by getting a soil sample and see what the soil sample's coming in, if that's part of the problem. Uh, I'm assuming it has to be somewhat, they assess that, uh, and we'll just go from there and see what the samples come in, and if they give a recommendation that, yeah, we need to treat it with this, you know, it's acidic, we need to add alkaline to it, to.
You're gonna just test the area, you're gonna pull a couple of soil samples here and there once in a while.
I'll, I'll pick some of the worst areas at least, and.
Just check the pH when you're gonna do it.
Well, I'll check the pH myself tomorrow, and if we need to. I mean, if that comes back and it shows that it's really low in pH, it tells me it's sort of acidic. I think we can calculate and figure things on our own, we can bring it back up and try it on our own first.
You get that balanced, so you're gonna throw a little fertilizer, or was it?
Yeah.
Are you talking like a farmer now?
But at least if they see we're doing something, trying to remedy it, even if it takes a little bit to get it figured out, and if they see we're at least doing something, and we'll keep at it until we get it figured out.
We'll get something figured out.
Because we've never had as many calls on all our last dozen years of projects than we had on this one with those.
We also want to look at something that, maybe a lawnmower or something like that.
This is.
Yeah. All right, any questions, other questions for Sean, or public works? Thanks, Sean, keep everything rolling, now we got the weather, here you go. Things are green. Engineering report, Jenna, you got anything for us?
Uh, while we are working on the design of the twenty twenty-three CIP, so working with Sean and the school district on parts of that. Um, also have a meeting scheduled next week with the private utility companies to discuss how to run service O two, um, Bear Cave Estates utilizing the proposed right away instead of existing. And then talk about next year's CIP projects also, because a lot to try to bury the power, so we can get the power a little solid out of there. Um, so working with those projects, um. We could bring up the crosswalk, so one of the things Sean and I, I showed Sean, and actually I showed the mayor earlier today, was, um, that mid-block crosswalk at, on Fifth.
Right in front of Danny Ware's.
Yep, right in front of Danny Ware's going to, um, elementary school. And that location, I know we had previously talked about looking at putting bump oats in to make a safer crossing, putting the, um, our, the rapid flashing beacons with the push button control. Um, with how offset the exit for the parking lot and Danny's driveway are, you can't, um, put a taper on those bump oats, they would be straight. And I'm concerned about the turning movement of a bus exiting and then turning north around that bump out, or Danny and turning south. Um, the other part is that when we don't put a flare on those bump oats, it's very difficult for plumbing services. So, um, the benefits to the, to a bump out like that is to put the pedestrian out in a protected area. Um, so it can, that pedestrian is visible by a car from behind a parked car, and it also prevents cars from parking too close to that crosswalk. So, um, we try to do it that way, um, again, to prevent cars from, because you are not supposed to park within fifteen feet of a crosswalk anyway, but nobody goes out and measures it, or heck, most drivers don't even know that.
No, unfortunately, K K, that just needs to be noticed.
And your engineer knows. But, so those bump outs, we designed them to keep cars away from parking where a crosswalk would be. Since we'd have a difficult time putting it in that location, we looked at moving it just south of the driveway for the, um, for the parking lot there.
That's why I was thinking, just looking at the background of it.
And we, we can fit it in there, but then with talking to Sean, are we getting so close to six, does it even matter anymore? Um, and that's what we would like to have the conversation with the school district on, is should we just be using the crop, a crosswalk on the north side of six?
Push them to the intersection where it's controlled, the cars are stopping and slowing down there.
Well, that's, that's a good conversation to have with them again, because that is always a disaster up there in the morning and the evening, even at that controlled intersection.
So are you familiar with Fourteenth Avenue by Saint Mary's and where they built the, the Berkman or whatever it is, that huge building? Second Street Southwest, you know, there is a, a fatal, I don't know, it was a fatality or a near fatality, pedestrian caught across, similar situation to this. And they're talking about in the future, they're not gonna do it until they're ready to redo that road, which is coming up, and doing a similar thing at the bump outs and trying to get it just, because it is so successful doing that, and there's so many people not paying attention even though they're allegedly slowing down to turn into the ER. So I go on, even if you went south here, I think you got plenty of room, because where they're talking, it's pretty close to Second Street, and you have two crosswalks real similar, but just because people can't walk thirty, for whatever reason, they won't walk thirty feet down to cross, right?
It is true. Um, another option is to actually put bump outs around that corner down by six and still make that crossing safer with the bump outs, but putting it at an intersection. I don't have a, a strong opinion either way. I do want it to be good and safe for the kids.
At the corner, I'd have a strong opinion with the bump outs at that corner, because they're gonna have to be on Fifth Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And that's gonna be a truck roll yet, you're gonna have some of the same turning problem.
Yeah, with some ice coming.
Right. Um, what we have drawn up mid-block, we do still have, the crossing that kids will have is still thirty-two feet long. It is a long crossing, um, with the bump outs that we're showing.
If you get those out with the, the rapid, what do you call them, rapid flashing beacons or something?
Yeah, and those.
Those are, those are really, in my opinion, um, they work really well on Second Street Southwest, again, I mean, they really catch your eye.
Yeah, and right, right in front of the civic center up in Rochester.
Right.
Yep.
I did meet with the school today and went up and looked at it and asked, got their opinion. Uh, they're gonna take that back to Belinda and whoever at the school that would be in charge of figuring that out, and that idea of sliding everything up to the intersection and having them all cross it, at the same point there.
Right.
We had that conversation with Jenna, and you can put the crosswalk wherever you want, people are gonna do this like Craig's, and they're gonna cross wherever they wanna cross.
Yeah, but they have crossing dirt there to, hey, kids come down.
What are they gonna do if they don't?
Yeah.
So, um, that's.
Do you not like the bump outs where she's talking about for plowing snow?
Well, from a public work standpoint, yeah, I'm not gonna, there's a maintenance, maintaining flashing lights and stuff like that, which, big deal, if we gotta do it, we do it, I'm not saying no because of it.
No, I just wondered if your opinion was there.
Yeah.
You're still gonna have a problem with the corner though with the bump outs.
If you put bump outs there.
But I would be very disagreeable with the bump outs at that corner, I really would.
I tend to agree with that, too, and I, I'm not against the crosswalk being at that corner.
No.
But I also don't buy the idea of having the, the ability to cross at the corner and also for you to move it.
To south of the driveway.
South of the, the north exit of the parking lot.
The one issue with if you cross south of the driveway, then the kids also have to cross back against where the traffic a second time where the traffic's coming out of the school. Where right now they cross, they cross just on the north side, and the kids never have to go across parking lot traffic.
Wouldn't they know if you walk out, say they're walking southbound on the left side of Fifth, they cut across, maybe, I mean, I guess they'd have to cut across the parking lot, so, but it wouldn't affect.
Well, there could be a sidewalk there, there's gonna be a sidewalk on both sides.
That's what I'm saying, if the crossing was here, I don't see why it's any different than if it's north.
Right, it's still, because this, the schools supposedly only lets the buses use that part, you know, that parking lot.
I think that's not, the busing comes out the other side, doesn't it?
No.
Isn't it?
They changed it now.
They've changed it so many times, it's hard to keep track.
I know, I know.
Not that it matters to me, but.
Well, it does, because that's what, that's what plugs up six.
What time does schools start?
Because the cars are.
I'm just wondering, do it, I think they go noon to twelve forty. No, I don't remember, I don't remember that.
I, I know Rochester is, what time does schools start?
At the high school, you can only get out, you can only get in at a certain time, seven forty at middle school.
Yeah, they don't let, they don't let you drop off at Bonner until seven forty, you're not supposed to.
Right.
But, yeah, school starts at eight o'clock there, it starts at seven fifty at the high school.
So it gets pretty congested on six and in that other parking lot. They, supposedly, it's only buses that are supposed to be going in and out of that, this parking lot that we're talking about.
My understanding is that it doesn't affect you at all, those setbacks all the way up.
It does sometimes.
You can't get in for your morning coffee.
Sometimes I want to make a quick.
Well, it sounds like I need to get down here in the morning and just do a lot.
You should, Bill and I, uh, to the, I.
Not in a cold, I guess.
I, I happen to be fortunate enough, I had to take a granddaughter up there the other morning, it's a, it's a real shoulder you need to do it once.
So that's one of the design considerations we are working through. Um, so, yeah, any more, I guess, talk to whoever you want to talk to about some of the ideas. So we don't get too far in advance with the design before we have to work something new in.
Yes, ma'am, you're there. Anything else for us? Oh, I know what I was gonna ask you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Bits on this?
It's in this, will be on the nineteenth, and then we'll bring them forward on the twenty-third.
All right. And on this, I mean the alleyway.
Yes.
Anything else for us, or any other questions for Jenna? All right, thanks, can I ask her again?
No.
All right, thanks. That'll take us to fire chief's report, man.
Uh, relatively basic month, uh, nothing major there, just a few notes. Uh, we are putting together a new committee called a BURG committee, now focused on burning acquired structures, and then also our CR, uh, CRP, uh, BURG. acquired structures, and then also our CR, CRP burns. Had a little bit of miscommunication, a couple of members on the department told some people in the committee that we don't do CRP burns, but we do, we do some CRP burns. These individuals paid a company to do it, so we're coming up with a policy and a committee to really stream like that a little bit more, so that it's clear to the community what we will and will not do, just so we don't get to that spot again, where you get a community member that feels like they were a little underserved, so. Working on that, that should be in place before next season comes into. We're going to participate in the graduation parade, as we have in the past, running EMS for the color run this weekend, then we're just getting ready for Fourth of July, the fireworks, and all the other activities that we participate in. And then already looking forward to October ninth will be the pancake breakfast for the fire department. That's about it.
Any questions for chief? All right. That'll take us on to committee commissioner's board reports. Chamber of Commons, we have nothing to pack at this time, EDA, HRA.
Meeting next week.
Finance.
You heard it tonight.
Library.
Meeting next week.
Cardboard.
Meetings rescheduled for next week.
Personnel?
In the process of hiring for public works.
Just had a meeting, yep. Buying zoning.
We're meeting in June, next meeting.
Public safety.
Just got a call, so.
I'm looking at public safe, good job. Public works? Where are you?
No report at this meeting.
Broke out.
No report at this meeting.
Transit advisory committee.
No report at this meeting.
No communications in the bag. Does anyone here want to use the open mic? All right, that'll take us to our final motion of the evening. I'll make a motion to adjourn, do it in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, here it is, your adjournments.